All who are gathered here today, thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of serving the community. We pray that you oversee the safety of our village employees and volunteers as they do their jobs. Bless our residents with safe neighborhoods, good jobs, and a great quality of life. We thank you for those people who are invested in the well-being of our community in various manners. We pray for the protection of our military personnel and their families. It is in your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May we have roll call, please?
Baker.
Here.
Bassett.
Here.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Here.
Hedley.
Here.
Barth.
Here.
Thank you. Do you have the June 19 regular council meeting minutes in your packet? Does anybody have any corrections?
Regular council meeting minutes, we said June 19.
Oh, on the agenda? Okay. Didn't see that. And I said June 19 probably, huh?
Yep.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Barth.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
You had the bills in your packet to review? Are there any questions about the bills?
What's the cable TV membership? What's that for?
For rotary.
And, let's see. The fire department fence, where is that at? Over here?
Mm-hmm. In the alleyway?
When they keep hitting.
Was that, isn't that insurance? Can insurance cover that?
Yeah, I didn't think about it. Probably would, I guess. People quit driving down it backwards, it wouldn't be getting hit. If they wiped out four or five panels again.
Didn't know who it was?
Nope.
Since we got it fixed?
No, they just got it. Well, I don't give it too long before it gets put in here.
Well, there's a lot of people. That last council meeting, you guys saw them come up front. They shot back behind me and shot going the wrong way. And somebody was, it was a model customer or somebody.
Scary camera cure, huh?
They pulled right through there and they were flying.
They're good.
We just got done putting them into the store. And upstairs.
I have another question. We had the dumpsters at the pavilion dumpster, and then was like 68, and then the Whirler park dumpster. Is that just, and they were like 218? Is that for this one dumpster for Whirler? Or is that several? I just saw, seeing the, and you had mentioned that when we were talking about trash pickup.
Parks got Whirler, and I don't know what size you've got. The pavilion's got the one for you.
Right. All right, is that just?
During the months of, since June, it's such a good all weekend.
Several times. Okay.
I would make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Baker.
Yes.
Bassett.
Yes.
Beverly.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Hedley.
Yes.
Barth.
Upstate.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is a proclamation submitted by the Defiance County Commissioners. July is proclaimed Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including Defiance County, and whereas our parks and recreation programs are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. Whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of the air we breathe, provide vegetative methods to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. Recreate, no. Whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and now therefore the Board of the Defiance County Commissioners do hereby proclaim July 2017 to be National Parks and Recreation Month and recognize the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. We encourage the citizens of Defiance County to visit their local parks and enjoy the outdoors. Therefore, it be further resolved that it is found and determined that all formal actions of this board relating and concerning the adoption of this proclamation were so adopted in an open meeting of this board, and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.2 of 22 of the Ohio Revice Code. And it's signed by Commissioners Ryan Mack, Mick Prokreski, and Gary Plots. And I agree with everything in it.
So now we'll go on to boards and commissions. You have in your packet minutes from the July 12 Board of Zoning Appeals meeting. And the meeting was to discuss an application for a zoning variance, the application submitted by the Johnson Memorial Library Friends as a request to change the setback from 40 feet to 20 feet for the construction of a building addition. And as you can see, that was passed. And then there were, there was a cemetery board meeting on July 12. Does there a report about that?
There is, we, let's see. We're in process of making the new rules and regulation book up. We thought we had it, but we went through it, and they're going to redo some of them. Had a couple ladies there that were concerned about some rules and regulations about when to take, who owns what on there. So Troy's going to work on that for us to see.
How'd he handle that, huh?
Yeah. And the next one is October 11th at 6:30, the next meeting.
And where's it held at?
Right here.
October 11th, right here. All right.
This might be dumb, but should there already be some rules in place that somebody follows?
There is, but we're redoing them.
Yes.
Because we're going to change the date on when they take the flowers off and try not to get before Mother's Day, so they can have flowers on for that, Easter.
Good.
Other than that, things are good.
Thank you. The flags look real nice out there.
Zane did that, wasn't it nice?
Very nice. Are there any other boards and commissions that have anything to report? Police and Fire Committee have minutes in the packet from July 5th and July 13th. Anything someone wants to give a report on?
If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them, or the committee will try to answer them.
Who's Billy?
The lady from Antwerp.
Put her application in, when we were looking for full-time M2s, but she's along the run for a time.
Water and Sewer Matt on July 10th, you have anything to report?
Well, we had a pretty good meeting. We had discussed several things in regards to the Haver Clearview project. That was kind of the main thing on our, on our agenda that night. You see where the options there with the, the outflow there at the end of Clearview and Haver. We're kind of more leaning towards a rock to the outer edge of that swell right in that area for the time being. Some of the residents that contacted, oh, some people there on the committee, and they said they had some water pressure issues. We asked Jesse Elson to take a look at that if they had any low pressure. They did find one line that had a, a small rock in it that created an issue. So if anybody out there is having water pressure issues, we would take a look at that. Concerned about the far end, not on Casper Miller, Kent had addressed that with Ken Kern. That's out there towards, and they said that would be definitely looked at once everything is dug and finished out there. We want to make sure all the water's draining properly on both ends of that road. Driveway approaches were discussed. We had talked about, there is going to be, from what we gathered at the end of the, today, Kent had sent an email, Ken Kern's had replied. There's going to be grass at the edges of the driveway with, per plan, dirt and grass planted there at the culverts off the edge of the driveway. All right, what else was there? Mike forgetting anything?
You realize that's not going to hold, don't you?
That was per plan for the, the edge of the driveways, with the grass and the dirt?
That and the driveways. If you drive out through there, you can already see underneath the driveways where the stones rolled out, rolled down inside of the pipes.
I mean, I've been out there several times.
What was there before? What was beside the driveway?
People had different things, I mean, over the years.
A lot of people, just rough poured concrete there, made a head wall out of it. If you've got ditches as deep as you've got them out there, which is to accommodate the water that they're anticipating from their study, there's no stone, no dirt, nothing's going to hold that thing back. And with the stone already falling out from underneath the driveways, just from taking the forms off or little kids playing on them. I took the mayor out there Thursday or Friday. I showed her how all the stone is down, it's already in the pipes because they used sixes. And of course, was told today that I don't know what I'm talking about, but when you can see back underneath one of those concrete driveways, it looks like there's only three, three and a half inches thick. The stone comes out from underneath them, the driveways start breaking up in about a year or so unless one really washes out. And then that guy's already left town, his year's up, he got his, his money back, and the village is going to pay to fix every one of them driveways out there. And I don't have a horse in this race. I've got nothing to gain financially, personally, anything. I just thought that with spending a lifetime in the construction industry, I thought I could get somebody to listen to me. And by my texts and emails and stuff today, nobody listens to anything I say. But I want the general populace of this village to know that you've spent a million dollars out there, and it's wrong. You've still got a mess out there. And you keep agreeing with them, Diane changes her mind, she agrees with them, Kent agrees with them, because you've talked to the engineers. If you think the engineer's going to go, hey, you're right, we did that wrong, let's tear it all out, we'll do it right, you're crazy in the world. I'm telling you, you've got a mess out there.
Well, how do we address this kind of stuff, Ron? Because over the course of time, you know, we spend a ton of money with these, these engineers. I haven't come across an engineer yet that we don't have an issue with down the road. I mean, we do bring these issues up to them. We, Kent brought it up to them today that they were concerned about the stone underneath the driveway.
Yep.
As of last week, when I talked to Ron Parker about the stone on the edge of the driveway, it was going to be stone in aggregate and pounded down and packed and compacted over time.
Compact, graded stone.
But that's what they told me, Ron. I said, I'm going by information from this person to that person. We gather information, we make decisions upon that. We rely on those engineers, and I know we listen to you too.
No, you don't.
What?
We listen to you because we discussed it.
It's the.
We did listen to you.
This committee spends hours talking about this stuff.
I, and I told the mayor that the other day, the Water and Sewer Committee has just worked their tails off.
Right.
On all these projects that's going on. But I'm telling you, Mike, I've spent a lifetime in the construction industry, not printing papers, and I know what I'm talking about.
And the last thing I want is anything that gets.
Like I said, I don't have a horse in the race. But I'm taxpayer, and you're going to pay to redo everything out there the way it's going.
With them replacing, it sounds to me like as of last week, Ron Parker told me there was going to be stone right there on the edge of the driveways and everything. They're telling us today, no, it's going to be dirt and grass seeded, completely, they're going to pull that stone out of there.
No, more dirt than they're putting on there, it ain't going to hold.
No. Which bothers me. I thought of the, I thought of the same thing you guys are talking about. But again, you know, we rely on these.
If that swell put back behind the third row houses, if that doesn't happen, or doesn't happen yet this year, if it's down the road, and we get all that water that comes so hard that it even crosses the road up on top of the hill, every one of those driveways is coming out, and anybody sitting here, I'll make you a wager on it. Because I know. I don't know everything, but I know that.
About the only way to hold those though is to put some kind of permanent structure in front of the culvert.
Yes.
divert the water.
Yes.
Hold the water, because it will wash out.
Definitely. And there is so much of this loose stone showing because they've dropped the ditch so much.
My little experience with people holding. Run the 93rd Engineer Group when I was in the reserves in legal. That was a big concern when they.
I got a quick question, guys.
What's that?
Mr. Beverly knows a lot about this type of work. Why isn't he on that committee, involved with that type of work?
He's on other committees.
He is on that committee?
He's on other committees.
I know, but it sounds like this is related to what he's had a lifetime of work doing. Why isn't he on that committee? He would be a lot more used to the community than what, catching dogs or something like that.
Well, the committees change every year, and it just so happened he wasn't on it this year. That was my choice, so.
Changes.
But your idea is.
Changes, and always good.
And those committees change. I've been on different committees. Ron's been on this committee in the past, you know. He's been on council a long time. Mike's in different.
This sounds to me like a pretty important situation.
Well, this year was a big push. The last two years was a big push to finally get these projects in fruition. They've been talking about them forever. You know, we finally got them to push through and, and get them accomplished. And these will be addressed. Like I said, Kent had emailed Ken Kern's last week about these issues, and about piping and different other things that we found. It's not all done out there. It's not completed yet. They keep saying, hey, wait. Well, I don't want to wait and find out, I don't want any problems when this is done. We spend way too much money. Nobody in this, on this table wants any problems. You know, but what, what concerns me about all this is, you know, we spend big bucks having these people tell us how to, what to do, when to do it, how to do it. I mean, a lot of money. I don't want any problems when it's all said and done. I don't want you guys coming back.
It's kind of the same token, you're not going to wait till the job's completed and then tell them you did it all wrong, are you? It should be all involved as, as the job proceeds.
But these guys do this for a living. I mean, and as Ron did it years ago, and I do paper, and Mike does auto parts, and he does gas, and Sheila makes, and you know, maintenance stuff. We all have our kind of things. But they rely on us for our best experience and, and I guess, answers to their questions in all our different fields.
You know, and the contractors, only in defense of all this, is only doing the job according to the engineer spec.
Right.
It's not that they're dreaming up all this. But Ron has some valid points. There's things wrong, we have to address them. I think our committee has done very well at working at trying to address a lot of these things. As far as your answer to committees, I think the mayor answered that. We serve at the pleasure of the mayor. Mayor signs committees, and she's done a good job picking committees. Next year, they'll change.
Well, what do you guys want to see on the ends of the culverts? If you don't want stone aggregate, and you don't want dirt and grass.
What was there before? I have thought everything was supposed to go back like it was.
Some were rocks, some was just rough poured concrete, some were, some of the culverts were buried, so it didn't make any difference what was on them.
Dave, yours was dirt, right at the edge of your driveway?
More dirt.
You had dirt wrapped around it, yeah.
Concrete.
I know. But they went from here, exaggerated, but ditches are going from here to here. It's going to be impossible to cut anything by the culverts, the grass.
You know, and I've been driving, I've driven out there many times, and, and I see driveways in the front row, and those ditches are big in the front row, and it's a straight drop, depending on how they want their driveways. It's a straight, they've had driveways bored, there's no edges, there's no blockers to have off. If they rolled off their driveway with their back tire, they'd fall off. And that was their choice on how they designed that, you know, driveway approach.
Probably the only way to hold those is take interlocking block, you know, landscaping stone, finish that front off, especially on the push side, I mean, coming down. But that water does go down through there. I think water's going to get away better, but I, I feel that.
But when water gets away better, it moves faster.
Faster. But I'm with you on this, if we get something done in this swell, which the mayor agreed to, that will stop a lot of that water coming through. And I think that can be accomplished without a lot of effort. You made that very point, that if you can get in there and do that in a couple days. So.
Like I said, I agree with you last time. If that, if we ever can get that back culvert put in, that's going to be a big impact on that front, those front culverts.
It's really not a culvert, is it?
Swell, I mean, a swell.
But you're going to cut those lines, and that's going to cause that water to go where it should.
Well, that's, that's what I said should be done, but you know, we're not even, we're not even there, we're not to the property yet.
I think that has to get done.
Well, anyway, I guess back to my, I mean, serious question, I mean.
I thought you had a question.
What's your suggestion for on the sides of the culvert? I mean, I'll pass along whatever you want, but what's the solution?
He was saying concrete.
It doesn't have to be a formed head wall. Just put some concrete in there, you know, smooth it up so the kids don't stuff themselves up. Get it so that it's up underneath that driveway, so that it can't get to the driveway.
It wouldn't freeze and thaw and then just break out. Goes on mine.
It's got a crack, there's no doubt about that.
I have just a wall.
Mm-hmm.
Did it myself.
Yep.
Held.
But the numbers that I've been hearing they're giving you for doing different things, $35,000 for a wall, $21,000 to run 60 feet of pipe to eliminate that deep corner, $21,000 to do that.
It's astronomical.
There's more people in this world than underground services, I'll tell you.
Well, I think, you know, I wouldn't be, cement's a good idea, but I think you got to, we wouldn't do this to improve. So I think people are going to have to, you know, some people have a good touch with landscaping rock, with, with these things you see at Menards that are interlocking and hold. I don't agree with council saying that you can't redo that for the betterment of your property. For you to say, no, you can't, I can understand why you can't have flowers or something, because that ain't going to hold much. And then it overgrows, and then you get problems with there too. But I think the people that, you know, things are going to be improved, I think they should be allowed to put in some arrangements down, or to make it, beautify their property a little bit in that culvert area. You know, I don't think you can.
And you think it's the homeowner's responsibility to?
I think, I think homeowners are going to do it anyway.
Right now, there's no restrictions. I mean, that's what they have done in the past however many years, people.
You don't have any restrictions about putting something in that ditch?
No.
Oh, my God.
Wasn't the ordinance committee going to discuss that?
They, they can't fill in the ditch.
You got an ordinance that says that?
Question is, well, I remember when this all happened, you said.
The whole idea behind it was.
Ever since I was even on the street department stuff, this has been debated, so.
So are you saying, are you saying there is legislation that they cannot do, that there's not?
Then, then.
There's nothing saying yes or no either one.
Well, that's terrible.
I thought that was going to be brought up to the committee to discuss.
Well, but I'm just saying, council can look back on some of this stuff and kind of look at themselves. This has been an ongoing for years and years. And that I. They weren't able to put anything back in there.
When he allowed people to do that.
I'm assuming when it got put in, there's probably some covenant that, kind of like with the rear swell, that they weren't supposed to touch.
That works well.
Well, I'm just saying.
And now when this hits the papers, that there's no ordinance against it, but there's going to be tiles flopping in that ditch everywhere, because there's not a soul out there happy with that ditch.
David brought it up right when the project started, before the project started, that, you know, is anyone going to be able to put anything they want in there? I thought we said that it was going to have to stay the way that they left it.
Saying it and having an ordinance is entirely two things.
We were going, we were going to do that, Mike.
You can say anything you want. Right here, put it in a newspaper, do anything. But if you don't have an ordinance that says you can't do that, you can't stop somebody from putting a tile in there.
Troy, weren't you going to write some guidelines on that, I think?
We talked about whether or not, and actually Kent just brought it up to me the other day or an email or something, I think, that it had been discussed.
After their meeting?
Yeah, after your guys' meeting or whatever, and so I was, that was part of what I was hoping I would get some guidance from as far as what the committee wants, but I mean, you can, you probably need something stronger than just drafting something to send to all the residents saying, hey, now that we got this done, you can't do A, B, C, and D, because like Ron said, they're going to say, show me where it says they can't do A, B, C, and D. And so then you got to decide what can they do and what can't they do, you know? Can they landscape around it on their own as long as they don't interfere with it? Or can they put a tile in it and bury it? And I mean, obviously, that shouldn't happen. So the line needs to be decided as to what's acceptable or not acceptable, and then we just need to treat it like it's part of our, like what it is, it's, it's part of our drain, it's part of our sewer system. And so in that respect, then, from an ordinance standpoint, and treat it any different than we treated somebody, you know, jumping down in the meter box and turning their own water on or something, they're still tampering with, for lack of a better term, village facilities.
Do you need the guidance of the committee then, or can you go ahead and write it?
I probably need some guidance, because I shouldn't be the one deciding what's okay and not okay. I mean, I draw from.
We can get back to the other.
Yeah.
Ordinance of the Water and Sewer, I want both.
I draw from.
It's going to have to be an ordinance.
Tile.
It's going to be an ordinance.
Tile and filling it in wouldn't be correct, that's obvious. But where do you draw the line? You know, Mike says they ought to be able to put some interlocking landscaping stones and do all that, and maybe that's true. But where do you go between there?
You're going to write it.
And dropping a tile in and filling it in, there's.
I think the village ought to repair the head wall ends, not the exit ends. Head wall ends, they ought to repair, fix them, fix it right. And then it's very simple. Touch the ditch, and things are not going to be good, there's going to be a fine, or you got to have something with some teeth in it. Can't just slap their fingers.
I know you don't hear this very often, but I do agree with you.
Did you get that?
Recording's not working. I do agree with you, right?
So I guess, so I kind of know what to do. I mean, not, not on that part. Back to the culvert cover, for lack of a better term. You want to leave that alone, or you want me to have them check into making cement flares, for lack of a better term, on both sides?
The one that the committee recommended riprap?
No, not down. We're not talking about that.
Oh, you're talking about the culverts, aren't you?
Yeah, everybody's driveway culverts. What do you guys want to see put in?
If you go up to Brian and go through that gray fox or fox gray housing addition, every culvert that's in there, whether it's storm, driveway, whatever, has a nice poured, formed, poured concrete apron, and if they're not poured, they're metal. They just look like a bunch of hicks.
Guess somebody has to take a road trip.
I've been through that. Most of these additions are like that.
I guess once people make their mind up, let me know. I'll leave it at that.
The committee will.
Because I don't know what to tell them.
Committee will meet and make a recommendation about the.
They're probably going to need fairly soon, so.
The ordinance for Water and Sewer.
Um, the ordinance. Has to be ordinance, huh? And then, but you need this decision from the Water and Sewer Committee about how you want the, the culverts.
Flares on the culvert.
Handled. Does that make sense?
I mean, like I said, we can call EMHT, and we can have them redesign and, and set up all the plans, we're just going to spend more and more money.
You don't need that.
Well, why do we, why would we, and I agree with you on that. If we can do it on our own, with our own contractor, why don't we just do it that way?
We can.
Be a lot cheaper.
We just need to decide what we want done.
Right. But it would be a lot less expensive in the long run.
Leaving them out.
Those guys.
But it's not going to get done at the same time as everything else. There again, I.
Where the biggest push is going to come is about halfway down. It's where the real push is going to come. And once it gets down there and turns, that's going to get eroded.
Oh, yeah. And that, of course, hits that grass head wall, because it's got that water, it's coming around there with all this momentum, it hits that head wall, it has, it's going to do a big backwash. I've seen them. And it'll take that whole guy's yard out until it gets enough momentum, and it turns and it goes through that pipe that's coming up there at a complete 90. If you just hooked on. If you just hooked on, leave a gap between that pipe that goes underneath the road and goes to the creek, leave a four-foot gap, and then come across that guy's yard, I was told nobody wants to do it because you got to get an easement. That's not a problem. Run about sixty foot of pipe and get back into that ditch. And with about sixty foot of pipe, go to about the end of that first house property line, set head wall, concrete head wall. And then everything else on that big deep end where you want to riprap it can be filled back in to within a foot, foot and a half. So you just have a nice swale there, and it'll go down, it'll take care of all the runoff off of those two roads at the intersection. Bring it around and drop it into that so that it can drain into that open section that's between.
It has to be a poured section, though, wouldn't it? You're talking about a four-foot section, it has to be poured.
No.
What would you put in?
You could, you could rock it, you could pour it. I mean, you got, you know, you got to have some type of hard aggregate in it. Because you're going to have all that water crossing that four-foot area, but it won't be coming down and coming to a screeching halt, reversing and making a ninety. And it'll get rid of that nasty corner.
That's by far the worst one.
You know, at one time, we talked about a pipe that went down or made the curve and then around the bend and then came, but Jeff and Kent had a problem with that because of how they were finishing the pipe there when it made the ninety-degree turn under clear view.
They were going to have like a ten by ten, something. We called it a something pad.
A big opening.
Riprap.
And we didn't, with the cost and everything and having that kind of opening at the end, very expensive.
You and I talked about this, Ron, why can't?
But if you've got that pipe going under clear view, going to the ditch, and you've got this ditch that's four and a half, five feet deep, you hook up so that you got a straight shot right into that pipe, but leave it open and come right back over here to that ditch.
You wouldn't have a straight shot into that clear view.
Yes, you do.
No, you wouldn't.
Been out there?
Yeah. How far up in his yard are you going to?
You know where his water pit is?
Okay, here's this swale. Let's just say this is where you're going to start your pipe. Going under clear views down here, how are you going to make that a straight shot? There's going to have to be a bend here and a bend there.
At the, at the very, very most, and I think the twenty-two and a half is too much. You would need a twenty-two and a half on each end, but I think twenty-two and a half's too much. I walked it, I measured it, took the mayor out, showed it to her.
You know, it can be done, there's a price tag with it.
Well, twenty-one thousand dollars to run sixty-foot pipe and pour head walls.
It was like a hundred, it was like a hundred and twenty-five feet, plus two head walls, plus filling in his. I'm just, that's what EMHT sends, I'm, I argue that, but you need a head wall here.
Every answer to anything that you guys disagree with me about is, well, the engineers.
Well, that's all I can pass on, is what the engineers told us.
I understand, but an engineer is not God. An engineer sits in an office and draws this up, he's not out in the field, he doesn't, that's just like when all these streets cave in that they're digging right now with quicksand. Them guys sitting wherever EMHT is from, they don't know this town sits on quicksand, they should by now, but they don't know all the little tricks and gimmicks that you got to do to pull things off around here.
Does your committees want to relook at that option?
That's a good plan. We, I will address that with Ken and Jeff and.
Okay.
You want to call Ken Kearns? Ron, you're more welcome to. You can say, hey, this is my concept on this. We've talked about three different concepts.
Well, I talked to the water and sewer committee and they already told me we're going to riprap it and that'll be the end of that, and he'll just upset me and I'm allowed to say something to him, he might not.
I will, I will let him know that you're going to call him ahead of time and say you have a different concept and a scope of things and I.
Which he should know.
But that's what the committee's.
Talking about it, you know, so he's aware that we have another idea, so it won't be a problem.
Well, yeah, we've said it. I like your better idea of riprapping that, because put yourself in that house. Does anybody want that?
Well, as soon as you riprap it, there's no way you're going to mow it anyhow, and as soon as you riprap it, you definitely aren't going to mow it. So then, now we've instantly got a maintenance problem that the town's going to have to take care of for the next couple of hundred years or whatever, going out there and spraying weed killer and stuff, but the town can't just spray weed killer like Joe Blow can. Town's got to get licensed people to do it and they got to use the proper stuff and it's just, we don't need any more things that create maintenance for the village. The village doesn't need any more things to take care of.
The committee is going to look at your idea, Ron. So, they're going to take it under consideration, so. Anything else for water and sewer committee?
Nope.
All right. Okay, administrator's report, oh, are there any other committee reports?
Yes, ordinance met tonight. They're a house down there, digging out the basement. We met, feel that, well, we voted two to one, believe as is, but I think we ought to bring in full council. When a house is tore down, you can't just fill it in with debris.
Dig a hole and push it in?
Right. So, do you want Troy to bring back legislation and say you can't do that, you have to make sure it doesn't have asbestos, or, right now, you can fill it in, so we understand there's no ordinance against it.
There ought to be, here I go talking again. You ought to have to come and get a permit, I don't care if it's only a dollar. Kent and Bob's office ought to know that something's going to happen. And then there are already statutes for that, you have to get, get the thing, check for asbestos and a bunch of other stuff.
I have that information here.
And.
The steps in a big city.
Yeah. Well, it's in DuVine County also. DuVine County runs the same statutes of that. But I feel so sorry for those people that bought the old cemetery, or the old hospital. You know, there was that much dirt on top of, always wondered why they left it so high. Well, they left it that high because the whole, all the junk was in there.
So, do we want to protect that information of that situation, or do we let the landowners?
I think we would be foolish. I mean, I don't know the dollar amount that they paid Shannon extra to hog all that out of that old basement and then dig another hole and get rid of that. There ought to be a deal, when you tear a house down, everything there, the footers, basement walls, whatever.
Down to the dirt.
It's got to come out. Do it right.
So, you want to bring it back, have Troy bring it back, it has to be right down to the dirt? Committee voted two, one, not two, but leave up you guys who don't have him.
I think you need.
Are you sure there's no ordinance out there? Because when we had Charlie bury the vehicle, that's when this stuff should have been taken care of.
And that's a totally different scenario, that's burying personal property. I mean, I would, I mean, even if there was an ordinance to address that, in my mind, that would be something totally different than.
Well, I would have thought that there would have been an ordinance brought up then. Are you sure there's nothing there?
I'm sure.
But I feel. This should be taken down to the dirt for groundwater safety. Asbestos, lead paint.
Well, I guess we could settle, if I had someone make a motion and taken a vote on it whether Troy should draw up legislation or not, then we'd know how.
I'll make that motion that we, we make it so that you have to get a permit, so that Kent's office can keep an eye on it, and that everything is removed from the house building, chicken coop, whatever you tore down, everything has to be removed from sight and taken to an acceptable landfill. An acceptable landfill, I mean, if your brother lives out in the country and you want to take it out there and burn it, that's fine. Just don't leave it in this town.
So, are you saying that they have to be inspected then also by a inspector? They got to mitigate any asbestos?
Well, that's, that's already in the statute for DuVine County.
And most people do that, I mean, all these area farmers use it for, it comes out of the basement, they use it for cricks and for washouts.
Yep.
And, and that's an easy fix. I mean, that stuff just, they come to you and say, hey, I'll take that.
Yep.
And there are some area farmers that let you do burn on their property.
That's, that's why we need rules, Mike, is because it's so easy to do it the right way as opposed to what we've seen happen.
I'll second your motion, Ron.
I don't have a problem. I agree with you.
Roll call, please.
Baker?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Edley?
Yes.
Barth?
Yes.
Troy, would you please draw up legislation and then they can?
I can smile.
After they read it, maybe they'll want to tweak something, but at least we'll have something to work with. Thank you very much.
He always wants to be.
Ordinance committee, anything else?
No, that's all.
Supporting.
So, this paper drive, it's going to be water and sewer, I'm on that committee.
Concerning how to fit, the ordinance committee is going to look at.
What people can put in.
Right. Limiting what can go put back into the ditch, or limiting anything going on to the ditch. The ordinance committee is going to look at that. Water and sewer is going to look at how to handle.
But I think what the ordinance may ought to take into place, things have to be, you know, it has to be far.
Turbo peel.
Yes.
Uniform.
You can't just throw cement in it. You have to have it done right.
Well, you just have one committee doing both. It's going to save a meeting.
Or join the committees.
So, will that be?
You got a special?
Oh, yeah. I'm a water and sewer and ordinance, so it doesn't matter. I think it should be water and sewer, since it is a storm sewer.
Being an easement the way it is now with the storm, doesn't that have already restrictions?
Because there's a written easement that was on, my guess is there probably isn't.
There probably ha, probably isn't or is, because I know.
Yes.
That's why we couldn't lay it back anymore, because we couldn't get out of our utilities.
Right, between the water lines.
You have a water sewer. Okay.
If you did it today and got a written easement.
I'm on it.
Or what was put in, the addition was put in today and it was put in there, you would have.
Water sewer.
Probably all kinds of details on it that aren't on it, you know, that weren't on it when it was done. It says, there's an easement this wide, it's still the property owners, but, you know, they can't. A, B, C, D, E, F in that area, and it would be a non-issue then.
Okay, the water and sewer committee is being given both tasks.
Okay.
All right. Mr. Martin, did you have something you wanted to say to the group? Someone thought previously you did before we started changing the discussion.
This is what I mentioned last, last meeting, what I discussed with you, that the guys out there talking about was wanting a pipe down through all the ditches, since they are going to probably buy a lot fifteen or sixteen-foot easement or something out back there in the field or whatever, that would make a lot of that water coming into the drive. Those guys out there, contractors out there, the guys that are doing the work out there, I mentioned something a couple of weeks ago during the meeting that, you know, they have, they've been playing stuff. I'd like to invite each, every one of you guys, more to my house, I don't care out there, I'll get that foreman out there, I'll get the ones that are doing all the talking out there. And, because they point fingers at you guys, you guys, fingers are being pointed, who's doing what wrong out there? I keep hearing, best thing to do would be to run pipe all the way down here to drive, tee it off, and everybody would have a, I don't know, a whole lot of.
Catch basin.
Catch basin in everybody's yard. It's a, I don't know, you limit from the driveways, people add stuff to the driveways, all that stuff. I mean, that's going to cost more money, but maybe in the long run, it's better to spend that money to get it done.
My concern is, twenty-three foot drop from up the top, curb to bottom, we get a lot of rain, that ditch holds a lot more water. So what happens if it all runs down, floods people at the other end, then they're going to be back up here yelling at us? I mean, that's my concern.
I understand everything, I'm just being, you know.
No, I'm not an engineer either, but. And Dave, we looked at that scenario beginning years ago, absolutely.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying what I heard, these guys.
Yeah, and they're just doing what the plans say.
Sure. And we looked at that, we looked at piping and flattening everything out, and they said, you've got so much water out there, without that back swell and getting some of that other water, surface water away from those homes, it's going to flood. You are going to.
Water rushes down there, it's going to flood the people at the other end. If you fill in the ditch.
If you fill in the ditch, you're still going to just have water running across the road in the same spots it does now, whether you put that swale in or not.
No, I'm talking about hooking the pipes.
He knows what he's talking about.
If you hook them all together, I mean, run a stone.
We're going to have your rain at twenty-three foot, it's going to right down, flood them out.
You can only put so much water in a pipe.
That's right.
Right. Right now, that ditch is going to hold a lot of water. You probably get a ten-inch rain and.
Probably at the most, you might be able to put a twenty-four-inch pipe in there and still get enough ground cover so she doesn't pop up and freeze and thaw. And twenty-four inches, I mean, most of you guys live out there, you know how much water comes down through there. Even before you start getting the water between the houses.
This is not me out there, I've got neighbors around me, they sit there, we can hear through air talk and these guys, it's not me saying. They said when they first, day one, these guys were working on that out there, said none of that out there is right. And I guess the foreman out there, he said he got his boss or what have you, and he got to talk to the engineer, whatever, come up with this, and then I guess the engineer, whoever else is with the engineer, came up with these drawings. And Atron says, they presented that to the council, you guys, and he says, he said, basically, you guys said you don't want to hear nothing about it.
No.
I'm just telling you. Just call my house and we'll sort it out.
The contractor. I'm just going to, this scenario, Dave, if you hired.
I'm not going to want to hurt that out there.
That's sad to say, I mean, that's sad to hear. We have, we have hours and hours and years and years of looking at this. You know, and I tell you what, if I was doing a job, you hired me to do a job for you, and I just started badmouthing myself, boy, this is terrible, or, you know, or anything like that. To me, that's, that's not very professional company.
I have heard a lot of good things from people out there, I have to tell you, I have. Not everybody out there has a negative attitude about this project, because I've had several people tell me that it's going to be great when it's done.
The thing about it is, you've got probably about forty-eight, forty-nine residents out there, and out of that forty-eight, forty-nine residents, let's see, you've got twenty-three or twenty-four of them that are fifty years or older. Out of that, you've got nineteen of them that are sixty and older. And those people that get up there that age like that, it's going to be hard for them to start cutting swales, or doing whatever with them out there. And, so, I don't know. Like you said, you talk to several people out there, they're just, they're a little pink with it out there, but, see, it's funny, I talked to some, I talked to quite a few of them out there, too, the way I get to, I get an earful about how crappy it's going to be, so.
All righty. Well, we're not getting anywhere, so we'll have Kent go on with your report.
I've got a question on the police and fire app. There you go, Kent. Do we have to vote on the salary for the fire chief? How's that?
There has to be legislation drawn up, a complete job description, and make sure that we want it the way we want it before it's done.
As far as hiring somebody, do we have to? No?
The person we hired just has to be presented by the mayor.
Are you talking about the fire chief?
EMT.
Oh, EMT, okay.
Okay.
Was anybody going to present the EMT tonight? Would this be the appropriate time, Mayor?
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Well, he's got a time to do his report, so...
Okay, that's my question. It wasn't really discussed, so.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, I don't care if I go over there. Is a couple things. Our meeting last week with the EPA and Bowling Green, we do have to keep metering, so just plan on seeing that bill every month for the foreseeable future, plus two years. We can pull the one. I called Gene the day after in his next trip up, he'll pull that one, so we'll save a couple bucks a month, but overall, we're still going to be paying, I don't know, between $700, $800 a month. And the reason for wanting us to keep metering is that all, all those figures will play into phase two when we get there. I still disagree, but we get the final say on that. They are allowing us to push Chicago Avenue, though, back into phase two, so that gains us about five years, simply because we've got to come up with a plan for Chicago Avenue. So, they bought into us not rushing into something, having yet another mistake. So, anyhow, that was good news on that. Bid opening for North Main Water Line is tomorrow at 2 o'clock in the council chambers, and we did get the contract through Ohio Public Works for that $150,000 grant. So, that's paying for just a little under half of that. And then on the block, community development block grant, we get a small grant just about every year that we apply. And this year, it applied for $20,000 to go towards some paving next year, but the commissioners increased that to 24.5, which was nice of them. And I said that'll be for some paving next year in 2018. Does anybody have any questions?
Are we on track for paving this speech down on the Nagel Job?
I still have not got that estimate from Ken, so I'll keep on it.
Okay, and...
Kent, thank you very much for all the time that you spend in securing these grants for us and the meetings that you often go to to do that. Over the years, you have saved the village or earned the village a great deal of money for grants. And Cheryl, you do a great job on keeping track of the money for all those grants and all the record-keeping, and you do a great job on that, so.
You'll get to see it.
Anybody have any more questions for Kent? Okay, we will go on to the Administrator's report.
First thing I have is Resolution 2017-14, second reading by caption only. A resolution for the Village of Hicksville, Ohio to rehire Troy Essex as village solicitor for the Village of Hicksville. Next is Resolution 2017-15, second reading by caption only. A resolution of the Village of Hicksville to enter into a contract, excuse me, with Pogomar Design Group, Inc. to provide engineering and design services for the elevated water storage tank siting plan and elevation tank design. Design, sorry. I'm going to, on the other stuff, go up from the bottom. I had another conversation with Michelle from Werler today. I submitted to her those couple of revisions we talked about in that contract, bumping up what's a residential from two units to three units, so that it was in conformity with our current statute. I added language in that would, along with the other services they're providing for village property, that would include them emptying the downtown receptacles that are up there, like we talked about. The last thing that I wanted to verify with you guys again is which one of the three options on the bulk pickup you for sure wanted to pick, and then they'll include that in the contract. They'll get me a final version, and what I would anticipate is that, and I'll submit that at the next meeting, then I'll bring like a resolution to enter into that contract with the intended start date being the first of the year, which would give them the time to order all the, I forget what name they use, but the bins and everything that they have to provide. She said that's, they just did it for another village that signed on with them, and the lead time was about eight, was about six to eight weeks in getting all those ordered. And so, she said, well, you know, if we do it in the next month or so, we're still well within the time. And once they get the signed contract, that's when they'll go ahead and order and do everything, so.
Didn't we all mess it out a little bit? Didn't we all kind of agree on two?
Mm-hmm. I just wanted to verify that. So, I told her I thought it was two, but I would check again tonight and make sure, and so I'll email her tomorrow. I asked Ron when we're done here about the Noelys Trailer Park, if we could have an executive session to talk about that. We've already talked about the tearing down buildings scenario, Sherwood Income Tax. I'm in the middle of that contract. I actually called to talk to their village administrator today, or whatever her title is. Is it administrator?
Yeah.
Yeah. A couple of questions I had about that, and the one, the one thing I want to verify for sure is when they're done out of their other contract, but I just had a couple of questions about the way they do things now, and then I should be able to have a draft of that for everybody to look at. I think from the information I was getting, it was anticipated that their contract's not up until the end of the year, so that we, just like the Werler thing, we would take over, which makes sense from an accounting, financial standpoint. We'd start new with the new tax year. But that's where that stands, so. That's all I have.
I guess one thing, since Ron mentioned this, but just so council knows, on that North Main, bore under there for that water line, I spent probably the other half of the day when I wasn't with the MHT with CSX, which, if anybody ever wants to take over a deal on CSX, let me know. They've been super fast on their correspondence. They've okayed the plans, but they keep chipping away. Well, suddenly they need more money, more money. So, I think I'm down to the last $375 that they're wanting to give the final okay on that. I'll know tomorrow, and then I'll get with Cheryl on that.
This is a bore or an open cut?
It'll be a bore. And they've been fine with the plans. It's the people with the fees and then another review fee, and then the latest was yet another plan fee. And the one today is, we just didn't have quite enough workers' comp liability insurance, so for $375, we can get added to their rider.
So, how much are we, how much do we be able to bore under there?
Well, we'll be able to bore from the south side to the north side.
For 375, that's what they're charging us for all that?
No, that's just for extra insurance. We've probably spent $3,100.
Sounds about right.
And that's cheap. They could have probably made it a lot rougher, but it's just been one thing after another with them.
I'm just surprised it's been fast.
I think that's shocking.
Give them that at 375 and just get that thing signed up.
Well, I checked my email before I came. She had a message, and I sent one back to her saying, are you sure, before I choose option A or whatever. So, as soon as I get the final word tomorrow.
That'd be huge.
Lock the thing down, yeah, buddy. Good job.
Anything else for Troy?
Yeah, they'll need something else, I'm sure.
Okay, we'll go on to department heads. Police Chief Stickney?
We have a presentation on the safety aspect.
Does anybody have questions for him? Okay. Fire Chief Kramer?
A few things on the fire side. Arc Solutions has donated a 5K generator to the fire department that will be used along with an AC unit that the association is purchasing to put on the bus for rehab, so it can cool down. The Ladies Auxiliary is having a lunch taco bar Sunday, August 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Tacos, rice, refried beans, ice cream and drink at the fire department. And on EMS side, we received notice from Lonnie that she will be leaving the department. Her last day was scheduled for July 28th. However, today I received word that she's going to be off on medical leave. So, I would like, I don't want to put anybody in the EMS chief position just yet. I haven't talked to everybody about it, but I would like to bring Bruce Silkot on as a full-time EMT to fill that spot, but not as chief.
I would recommend that we hire Bruce Silkot as a full-time EMT.
I would turn that mayor's recommendation into a motion that we proceed with the hiring of Bruce Silkot.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Barth?
Yes.
Hedley?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Baker?
Yep.
But for the record, chief, we still have Cody Royer as the assistant chief.
Right, right.
Who will be your contact.
Right. I'm just not sure I'm going to move into the chief position just yet.
Understand.
I would like to also take this time to thank Lonnie for serving as our EMS chief. I know she was a great EMT, heard a lot of good things about her, and I'd like to thank her for her service. Because she's on medical leave, I doubt we'll be seeing her, but I would like it to be known that we appreciate her service.
Yes, I appreciate her services, and she has made a difference.
She did a good job.
Yep.
Yes, Kent?
You know, I think on those two pieces of equipment you're getting, could you get me a cost on those, and I'll find out if they're going to be insured separately or not, or if they're just included, but that way I'll know.
The AC will be mounted on the bus, so.
Okay, so that probably wouldn't affect it. But still, I mean, if, without going to bother, I'll just run it past Conrad.
All right.
And then back to insurance, I'll run past Conrad on the fence.
Anybody have questions for me?
I'd also like to thank Arc Solutions and the fire department, I assume, for money you raised.
Yeah, association money.
To buy the generators.
Arc Solution donated the generator. We're buying the air conditioner.
Okay, but thank you very much to both of your groups. That's...
What's it run on? The generator, what's it run on?
It's run on electric. It's like a roof air conditioner for a camper.
No, no, no.
Gas, it's own power.
The generator. The generator's gas.
Okay, natural gas, I'm guessing.
No. Gasoline.
gasoline, okay. Gotcha. That's not through your whole fire.
No, we have a generator that does the whole station.
That's for your equipment truck?
Yeah, it's for our equipment truck.
The bus.
Gotcha. I misunderstood. I thought it was a pig one.
Well, that'd be nice for you.
Who's getting it?
He handles them now.
Who?
And Arc Solutions.
Oh, yeah? Said that camper placed that bike.
Oh, that, we're getting through ditches.
Anybody have any questions for the chief? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ken.
Thanks.
Arc Director Val Shaw, you have anything to report?
Nope, everything's slowing down. Baseball's over there.
Townes courts are done?
Yep.
Take credit, we had this spot risk management inspection, and they picked the park to go inspect. And so, they, I forget, six or seven pretty minor things, but they got that back to me and I sent it in, so.
Good. Glad that went well. The park looks real nice. Okay, fiscal officers report.
You have the cash, month-to-date, year-to-date report, and you have my phase one with all the payments so far. And on the one side are all of our loans and grants. And I have one more thing to let you know that the fire levy is filed officially.
All right. That's good. So, the left side is all of our loans, and the right sides are their projects, naming the contractors, the total of the project, the grants, loans that we got with it, how much the village is contributing. Anybody has any questions about that?
I have an announcement to make, Mayor, but it's convenient.
All right. You might, you can make your announcement right now if you want to.
Okay. I was down on the Nagel Job, because they're coming up Main Street. Told him I was going to a council meeting when I left down there, and he said, would you please tell them that beginning tomorrow, Main Street will be closed. Local people can still get there, but they'll be stone dumped along the sides of it. There'll be equipment sitting there, but it's going to take them until the end of Wednesday to get to the corner and set that monstrous manhole. Then they proceed up the street. They're going to push, get their gun before fair, but no guarantees. Sorry.